Hey, everyone, and welcome to the January 13th, 2022, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Happy New Year, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since Lori's not here, Mike has graciously volunteered to fill in. Would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke, here.
Aiken.
Aiken, here.
Burton.
Burton, here.
Canower.
Canower, here.
Tidings.
Tidings, here.
Sangster.
Sangster, here.
Weisar.
Weisar, here.
Dubruck.
Dubruck, here.
And O'Connor's here. And I'd like to welcome our newest member of the Penfield Planning Board, Ms. Kelly Aiken. Welcome.
Thank you, very excited to be here.
Yeah, excited to have you. We have minutes from the December 9th meeting, and hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Maybe we can entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
So we got moved by Burton, second by Canower. And we can call a vote. Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
I will abstain from voting since I was not a part at that time.
Okay. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, so tonight, we're gonna switch things up a little bit. I'd like to go a little bit out of order in our tabled items so that we can take care of a few shorter things and then potentially get into a little bit further discussion on a couple of the agenda items. So what I'd like to do is start off, instead of going 1, 2, 3, 4, the way it is on the agenda, I'd like to go 2, 4, 1, 3. We are, we have a public hearing at 7:00. So we'll get as much done as we can prior to 7:00. Do the public hearing at 7:00. Once that's over with, we'll continue with the work session items. And the only thing is, I, you know, I don't think anybody wants to be here till 11:00, so we'll make, keep it timely. And we do have a couple, one or two action items. So Doug, if you want to get started with the tabled item number 2.
You want to start with the action items or the tabled items?
Uh, let's start with the action items.
Okay. First action item, 1412 Shoe Craft Road is an administrative resubdivision. They are a flag lot and a frontage lot on the east side of Shoe Craft as you're getting closer to Plank Road. The property owner at 1412 is looking to purchase approximately, I think it's about a quarter acre of land from his neighbor, move his lot line further north. Both lots are currently compliant, would remain compliant. Staff has no concerns.
Okay. Engineering's good with it and everything? Anybody have any concerns on this?
No.
No.
Entertain a motion?
Motion approved. Tidings?
Got a second?
I'll second.
Canower, second?
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right, our second action item, 1000 State Road, just around the corner. The property owner at 1000 State Road is interested in picking up about 7,000 square feet from his neighbor at 998 State Road. Both lots are currently zoning compliant. The, that area is already covered underneath an access easement, so access would still be provided to both properties. As such, staff has no real concerns.
No staff department concerns?
No.
Okay, anybody on the board have a concern about this?
No.
All right, entertain a motion to approve?
I'll do a motion to approve.
Second? You want a second? First thing?
Sure thing.
All right. So we have a second by Aiken.
Hetzke.
First mention in the minute. Congratulations. Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start with tabled item number 2, 2745 Penfield Road, Highland Estates. Preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval for a 17-lot subdivision. So since we last met, the archaeological survey that was requested by the State Historic Preservation Office was completed and had been sent to them for their review as part of seeker. The executive summary, running through it really quickly, was that they conducted a full Phase 1, Phase B archaeological survey. They found nothing of archaeological or cultural significance on the site, and they didn't have, didn't find any significant concerns. Shippo agreed and has issued a letter stating that they have concluded their review and that they have no issues at this time.
Okay, so we need to declare lead agency, right?
Correct. I think we can do that as a simple vote.
Yeah, somebody want to move to declare lead agency?
Move to declare lead agency by the town of Penfield Planning Board.
Got a second?
I'll second.
All right, call a vote.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Continuing on, staff has issued a PRC memo on the 27th of December. Most of our comments were relatively technical in nature. You know, overall, the lots are all compliant. We're looking at, you know, correcting spelling, some minor engineering, you know, minor engineering changes, sliding something over here, or, you know, cleanouts required every specific distances. So it's relatively technical in nature. If the board is comfortable tabling pending, having staff work through, or work our way through draft approval resolution and working on the completion of seeker.
So I move to continue to table this application and to authorize staff to prepare an approval resolution for the board's consideration.
You have a second?
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right, so application number 4, 35 Apollonia Lane, Bramble Ridge subdivision. So staff was going back and forth with the applicant as well as we've had several conversations with the DEC regarding this application. So it's a two-lot subdivision, but the two lots are part of a greater approval. Bramble Ridge was preliminarily approved back, I believe, in 2000 as a much larger subdivision. Staff's concern has been related to stormwater management. Once you reach five lots, it does trigger the requirement that stormwater for the reduction and control of stormwater on the site, that's generally handled through stormwater management facilities, ponds, whether retention or detention ponds. We've gone back and forth with the applicant. They're showing a small pond, but we don't have any stormwater calculations or design information suggesting that it could handle more than the two lots that are proposed. In our discussions with the DEC, we shared our concerns that we would like to see a stormwater management facility that would be able to handle the full build-out of the subdivision once all the lots are complete. So that has been a point that we've been going back and forth on. Mike, am I leaving anything out from the engineering discussion?
Oh, yeah, that's with Mark Valentine had a discussion with the DEC in regards to what should be required for the application. You know, we were looking at just maybe providing a facility for the remaining balance of the subdivision. They have shown a stormwater facility. Like Doug said, we haven't gotten any supporting documentation to see how that's sized, what it can handle, and so that's sort of where we're at right now with it.
All right, so essentially, let's say that the overall subdivision is, how many? Eight?
I think the original one was back from 2000 was maybe 12?
I think it was 12 lots.
12 lots? So we are potentially getting into like a segmentation type situation?
Yes, we're definitely there. I mean, it kind of depends on the existing owner of the overall parcel on how much he wants to actually sell off. So, I mean, maybe he wants to keep the rest, or maybe he wants to sell three more lots off. So we don't know that answer, so it's kind of hard to determine to meet the Phase 2 requirements of the stormwater regulations. So that's where at least staff is having some challenges trying to grab hold of.
Right, and I guess I can understand both sides of the
Right.
argument, but I think that we need to plan for the full build-out.
Yeah.
Need to have some plan for that.
Potential full build-out, right.
Otherwise, we're just, we're not gonna end up ultimately with a good situation.
Right.
Okay, so we continue table, waiting for those negotiations to work themselves out?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we
We need calculations.
The calculations, and I, you know, we just got the plans last week or so, so we've, the plans have been reviewing, but yeah, that was one of the comments in this recent review that there's no supporting documentation on the pond size.
What about the paving? That was a concern too, right?
So the paving, the applicant was correct that the overall property owner has posted a bond to the town for the topping of the road. So that's out of his purview as far as being a requirement for these two lots.
Okay, so that's, that part's settled?
Yes.
Okay, so really, all we're waiting on is the stormwater?
Correct.
Okay?
I'll make the motion to continue table. Tidings?
Got a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Moving on.
All right. All right, so I'll move to application number 1, 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the past stone mixed-use development. All right, since our last meeting, we, the applicant came into our project review committee. It is a committee made up of town staff that meet on a regular basis to discuss ongoing applications and providing our technical advice to the boards. They came in and met with us regarding revisions to the site plans and some changes to the overall development. Catherine has brought up Building 2. You'll notice the daycare is no longer on the west side of Building 2, and the supporting infrastructure for that, including the turnoff lane or pull-off lane and some of the subsequent parking that was part of that, has been removed. Instead, they're showing 8,200 square feet or a little over 8,200 square feet of commercial, first-floor commercial tenant space along the pedestrian spine on the east side of the building. So the side, that side of the building had already, they'd worked on architecturally making it look more commercial back when it was residential so that it did, it felt more inviting and less like you're in somebody's backyard. So that, that will retain the commercial feel with, you know, full-size glazed windows and a more traditional storefront look across that face as they have, I believe it's four tenant spaces proposed or three tenant spaces proposed?
It's just open right now.
Just open?
Yep. But it could be multiple tenants.
Okay, so as part of that, they did revise what's now called Penfield Square Road along the west side of the development. It is just a continuation of the complete street with parallel parking on street. It does provide a little bit of greenery or separation between the building and the road. They did provide for the board a summary of the changes that they had made as part of their, their site plan updates and some of the layout changes. They're still proposing the, a commercial space located on the north side of the pedestrian spine closer to the border with the Wickham property. They did provide a color site plan here that does show sort of snapshots around the development of what it, what it would look like for the board, just to help get you guys comfortable with, you know, some of the site infrastructure that'll be part of their design.
Okay. So I guess to begin, I appreciate the putting together the, you know, the bullet pointed checklist, that's, that's helpful. I don't mean, were you?
I'm good if you guys want to enter into the discussion.
There's a, and I, I like the fact that there's commercial on the first floor of the east wing
Mm-hmm.
of Building 2. I'm still, I have to say, I'm struggling with, I, I'm not sure where you get the 20%. I see how you got those calculations, but I don't really agree with the calculations. I think that counting the whole pedestrian spine as commercial space is a massive, massive stretch, and that's 28,000 square feet out of your 40-something. It's like more than half of all the commercial space. So I guess I calculated 8% commercial versus the 20-point whatever was calculated, and it's, it's still not quite, it's not there. And I'm still trying to figure out, I mean, I know that I've made a number of comments over the last few months about what this part of the district is supposed to be. It's Zone A, there's not that many Zone A sections in the whole mixed-use district, and it's still, to me, apartments masquerading as a mixed-use development. And that's not really what the town's vision is for the entire district. We, we're not interested in seeing a sea of apartment buildings up and down Route 250. So you're, you're making progress, but we're still not there, in my view. So there's probably a few other things, but I'd like to also open it up to other members and some of their
Thanks, I'll jump in. I just want to touch on the architectural design, stuff that we spoke of, Mike.
Sure.
And I was reviewing some more paperwork earlier. I mentioned it last month, I talked about the earth-ton brick and things of that nature, and I don't think you guys were really, didn't answer my questions, I guess, the way that I was looking for. And why I say that is because I reviewed the plans from Chris Lopez, our consultant. I know you guys took a look at them back November, December.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we provided a response to
Right.
his memo.
And I, I just reviewing the responses, I don't know if Catherine or Doug want to pull them up, but basically, they agreed with what I was saying that, you know, it needed something. They weren't, Chris mentioned, and I think the response was, whoever responded in the letter, I'm not sure, it's probably shown there that it was non-compliant, basically, Chris, you know, and obviously, we use them for our recommendations because they're, they're knowledgeable and things of that nature. And I guess the response, you guys had the time, if we find it there, was you respectfully, you know, disagreed, was your response, basically. And I guess I'll let you take a shot at it again because, but I'm gonna stick with and agree now with, I understand, you know, Chris Lopez, too. I don't know if you guys reached out to him and spoke with him again about it, if you guys had a meeting, I know there was maybe some other meetings, but what's your thoughts? I'd still like to see that brick down there, if we could do it, in the bottom half of the building, and get away with that red burn thing, I was not in favor of, obviously, you folks know that, so, so, you know, if you want to respond to that, I appreciate it.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Can you please clarify what you, when you're talking about brick? What do you mean? You don't like the color of the brick, or you want more brick, or what is?
Yeah, the earth-ton brick, you know, along the bottom of the buildings, he had it, I mean, it looked like it was there, but, but I was, you understanding that you weren't gonna do that now?
No, we are doing that.
Oh, you're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Who said that we were not going to do it?
I don't know, the way the response was when Chris Lopez recommended that.
That was not, that's, that was not how I read the question. The question was in general, he was not specific to materials. I don't know which question you're exactly talking about, but
Well, right, well, I don't know, maybe I should ask you what you meant when you said you respectfully disagreed?
Can you please bring up the one where I say?
Response to Chris Lopez's comments?
Oh, okay. He's talking that the following characteristics are not compliant with the manual. He is, the way I understood there, he was alluding to the design approach that was for the village, the intersection of four corners, small village-type character. We are not there, we are on 250, and so the small village architecture does not really apply to that specific location. We were trying to design the buildings that were in character with surrounding structure, which was YMC and Penfield Square. So that's what we are taking our inspiration from and, and our feels across the street. So our buildings are compliant with architecture that surrounds that specific area. Now, Penfield has many different areas, and our design guidelines are written for all of them.
So you disagree what he wrote in his, his question, obviously?
Right.
He felt that you were non-compliant with that, but you feel otherwise?
And I, I felt that in that specific sense, we were compliant.
Did you ever, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a potentially overarching feeling here that we're, for the district, we are looking for that villagey feel so that I don't really want to use Penfield Square as a benchmark to necessarily duplicate.
Well, duplicating it, yeah.
And in this district, that the, in the, you know, the full build-out, it should feel like its own village or town or something. And what we're trying to do is get developments so that they work in some type of synergistic fashion to ultimately create that. And I don't know if that's along the lines of what you're, I know that's my biggest hangup, I don't know if it's my biggest hangup, but it is a big concern of mine that, you know, we have two big apartment buildings, and we're trying to get a villagey feel there. And I, I feel like we've actually been fairly clear about it.
Well, this is some, you know, up until now, it looked like the board claimed that they liked the way the architecture of the building was going, and they, the board didn't have concerns like you, you know, expressed now. These buildings, even though they are large, but because of the details and variation of the form of the footprint, the buildings will not look like monolith structures. There are steps in and steps out, there are different colors and different materials. So that will reduce the sizes of the building for pedestrians as they, if you walk by the building, you will see what's in front of you right now. You will, you will not see the building as, as like monolithic structure. That was the, the goal of the design. Elements, you know, there were several notes in, in the, in the review. One of the note that I didn't agree with, and maybe that's one that where it said we respectfully disagree, was that the architecture or the footprint of the building does not have separation or distinctive masses of, masses of the building with, that provide shadow line, and the color of the building does not correspond with the, with the volume or sculptural delineation of the building. And that's what I don't agree with because as you look, if you look at the building, you will see that different materials are applied to different, to the surfaces that would associate either that surface is farther backward or, or in the front view. So I thought we achieved what we were trying to do here.
Okay.
Yep, and I was gonna say, I think one of the discrepancies between the board reading the response and the intent of the response was the, the response was basically focused on the architecture of the building itself versus the architecture of the building itself versus the neighborhood feel and the layout of the site itself, which is what we're trying to achieve in other ways, not just the architecture, what the materials of the building are.
Right. So I'm going to have to put us on pause right now, because we got to do the public hearing, but we'll, shouldn't take that that long, so why don't we pause this? We'll do our, the public hearing sketch plan for the evening, and then we'll come back and then reconvene this discussion.
Sure.
Okay, so, we move into our public hearing portion of the evening. We have a sketch plan tonight, which is an informal discussion with an applicant for a concept for a project that they have. As such, you may see incomplete drawings and not the level of detail that we would find with a complete official application. And so it's an opportunity for the applicant to share with the board their concepts and get some feedback from the board, as well as comments from the community at large. So if you are here, present in the auditorium and would like to speak about this, there will be an opportunity after the planning board asks questions. We welcome your comments. If you are watching from, if you're one of the tens of millions of people out there watching on television or online or anywhere around the world, and would like to call in, you can call the Town Hall at 585-340-8771. And the control center downstairs will get you in the queue. And let me know when somebody's on the line to make a comment. And you can also submit comments electronically on the town of Penfield's website, which is www.penfield.org. And on the homepage, there should be a link to this meeting, which can then show you the way to submit your comments electronically. With that, Doug, would you like to read tonight's application?
Yes. APD Engineering and Architecture, 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York, 14564. On behalf of Fairlane Dr. LLC, requests an informal discussion before the board with plans for a Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through and associated site improvements on 1.9 acres located at 1800 Empire Boulevard. The property is now or formerly owned by EC Barton &amp; Company and Zoned GB General Business. Application number 22P-0001, SBL number 093.15-1-57.
I'll set to go.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Betsy Brug.
Take your mask off if you want.
Great, oh, thanks, that's good, because I, my glasses fog up.
I'm going to go rogue and say you can do that.
Great, thank you. My name is Betsy Brug. I'm with the firm of Woods Oviak-Gilman, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight. Mike McCracken from Hospitality Syracuse, which is the owner of Taco Bell Restaurants, and has been doing some new development in the area. Stephanie Albright from APD, who's been working on the site plan, and we're pleased to be here tonight with this concept sketch plan for review. You identified the site. I think Hospitality Syracuse is really excited about having a new location in Penfield. It's in the general business zoning district. It seems to be a great location. It's a little unique site. I think, you know, it sits between the Chipotle and the existing home outlet. I'm not exactly sure how to describe that use that's there. It's a unique use of that building. It's kind of an unusual building, which we can also talk about a little bit later. Essentially, there's a big, open, unused parking field, and Taco Bell would like to make that a Taco Bell site. They've been doing some newer stores in the area. There's a new one in Chi-Li, a new one in Perrington, you know, if you drive by and see what their new, newer models look like. We did get some PRC comments. We did try to address those and did submit a response. Stephanie jumped on that right away, on an effort to kind of give you the best possible plan for your review, so that we could get the, you know, obviously, the best dialogue and feedback from you this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie to go through the details.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Betsy mentioned, we did get these comments back, so the site plan that's on the screen here now has been improved from our original sketch plan submittal. The property fronts on Empire Boulevard, which is a New York State DOT road, as well as Creek Street, which is a Monroe County DOT road. So we will be working with both of those agencies for the applicable approvals as the project moves on. The original sketch plan did propose a right-out exit on the drive-through lane on Empire, and due to, you know, the location of the Chipotle entrance over there, it was kind of requested that we pull that one back. So on the new sketch plan, or site plan, we have pulled that off. We are maintaining the entrance on Empire. And then, again, the initial sketch plan showed two access points on Creek Street, and that has since been reduced to a single one that lines up with Sovereign Drive. We do have sidewalk access to the site. We've extended the sidewalk both to Empire and Creek Street on either side of the building. So we will work with Monroe County DOT to get the new entrance approved. We have requested a traffic study that should be in soon, and we'll include that with our full site plan submittal. The home outlet building will remain in, you know, same use as it is now. We will be submitting for kind of two separate site plan packages when we get our full package together, because of the site plan modifications for the home outlet. So we'll have one set of plans, but two applications, so the board can review and act on the two portions separately. We're not doing a lot to the home outlet portion. We have reconfigured the parking slightly. We've put parking along the northern side of the building, added two ADA spots there. In the southwest corner of the building, we've angled the, those seven parking spaces a little bit, which adds a little bit of green space in the far, yeah, right in that area there, we've been able to add a little bit of green space there by reconfiguring that. To the south of the home outlet is an existing asphalt drive that's in really poor condition, so part of this project would be to replace that. Again, this was one minor change between sketch plan and now our site plan. We were originally going to try to make that more of a 24-foot lane, but once we got the survey in and looked at the existing limits and everything else going on, that wasn't feasible. So it'll be 18 feet wide to match the existing conditions. The proposed Taco Bell is 2,600 square feet, and this will have a brick exterior to it, and will include full building elevations in our submittal. This is an upgrade from kind of a typical Taco Bell look, and it's one that Hospitality Syracuse has been doing in lots of similar neighborhoods. If anybody has been to the newest location on Lehigh Station in Henrietta, that has a similar look, as well as Chi-Li. There's one out in Greece, so if you guys are out and about, traveling around, feel free to look at those buildings.
Where are they, in Chi-Li and Greece and Perrington?
It's on Chi-Li Avenue in Chi-Li. In Perrington, it is in the Perrington Square Mall.
So in where McDonald's is...
Across from Wegmans.
Yep, it's in the Aldi Plaza?
So the southwest corner, like across the street from Wegmans?
Yeah, across the street from Wegmans.
Across 31.
Yes. Yep. And Henrietta, it's very close to the on-ramp.
Yeah, right near 390 and Lehigh Station, and this is the, you can see, still in construction here for Henrietta. So we think it's a pretty nice-looking building, definitely has some upgrades, decent amount of windows, so it would look very similar to this one here. The dumpster will be enclosed with similar materials to match the building. This project will include a subdivision, so that Taco Bell can own their own parcel. So it'll be approximately 0.75 acres for the Taco Bell and 1.15 acres to remain by Home Outlet with EC Barton. The intention is to be under an acre of disturbance. I'm working on the final grading plan now, and with a lot of the asphalt out there, I think I'll be able to maintain enough that we will be under that acre of disturbance. We are increasing green space by about approximately 8%, so there shouldn't be any stormwater concerns or speedies permit required. And we're working on our landscape and lighting plan. Those will also be included in our full submittal. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be pulling together all of the documents to submit, which would include, like I mentioned, the two site plan applications for the Taco Bell parcel and Home Outlet, and conditional use permit and subdivision. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just got a couple, I guess. How many variances do you think you're going to require by the time you're everything figured out?
Part of the answer to that, I'll need some help clarifying which variances we may need for Home Outlet. So if we're not changing anything or making it worse, I would assume that we don't need a variance, but if we are changing something, then we would need a variance. So that being said, I would assume that we would need a front setback variance for the Taco Bell, and then, since we're not changing anything with the Home Outlet, that would be existing nonconforming. And lot coverage, but we are making things better for both parcels. And then parking, and likely signage. I haven't done a full signage analysis yet, but I would imagine there'll be a handful for signage as well.
So now you're moving, you're presently down the street on the road?
Correct.
Right now, so you're going to, now, is that building the same size as the one you want to put up over here?
Do you know the size of that one, Mike?
It's close, it's within, I think, a couple hundred square feet.
Do you mind introducing yourself and giving your, just for the record?
I'm Mike McCracken from Liverpool, New York, and I work with Hospitality Syracuse, the operating company.
Thank you.
So the other store is yours also, Mike?
What's that? I'm sorry.
The other store that you're moving is yours.
Yes, it is. We have some access issues there. There's, it's difficult to get in and out. It's a very narrow site, and we have a renewal coming up, and we rent it, and our new model is to own, if we can own. Just, it's a tough site to get in and out of, and that, this one, I think, is more visible, better access. And a newer store, we can, we can invest in a property we own.
You don't think there's going to be any issues, though, similar to what you may be experiencing right now? Getting in and getting out?
Well, you know, we're close to the light there, and what happens a lot is, you know, when the Walmart light turns and people are going left, it's very, very difficult to get out of there. I expect on Empire, one of the good things here is that we're proposing two egresses to share some of the traffic burden, so hopefully, that'll help to alleviate anything like that. And we're a good bit further away from the light here.
How'd you find that, this light, this...
We've been, we've been looking for a number of years right now. We really, we're looking at the Chipotle site, too, but they beat us to it, but...
Somebody jumped on it.
Yeah.
And basically, it's going to be what the, your hours of operation, anything like that, once you get rolling, be the same?
Yeah.
You guys are in 24/7, right?
No, no, it'd be exactly the same hours that we're operating now.
Is that going to conflict with the Home Outlet, as far as hours of operation, things of that nature?
Well, we shouldn't. I mean, we are, obviously, we're open longer than them, but, no, we're hoping that both, both businesses are complementary. They don't have a huge rush at a certain time of the day, but they're actually hoping that some of our customers will traverse into their building, too, so maybe a mutual benefit there.
So you're going to subdivide this, and then you're going to just take care of your parcel? You're not doing any other work in conjunction with them to clean up that whole area around there at all?
I think the proposal does include new fencing around their yard, around their storage yard. And we're going to be new asphalt, new top coat, new curbing, so, yeah, the whole, the whole site in itself will get dressed up.
You want to think about, because if you reduce the parking, too, you got to think about like snow removal, you know, things of that nature, where you're going to push it over there? It's going to be interesting. Okay, I'm all set right now.
So from the original submittal, with one, two, three, four, at least four curb cuts, you reduce it down to two, and you're moving the east, the Creek Street curb cut, instead of it being two, kind of north and south of Sovereign Drive, you're going to have just one?
Right.
Right across from Sovereign Drive?
The lineup, correct.
Opposite?
Mm-hmm.
And then, the second one would be where the existing one is on Empire Boulevard?
Correct.
And the single parcel will be subdivided into two? Do you own both, and you're going to rent out the Home Outlet? Or does that stay with somebody else?
The EC Barton will retain that parcel.
Okay. And then you're proposing to buy and subdivide out the parcel with the Taco Bell in it?
Correct.
Okay. And we need cross-access and parking easements and maintenance agreements and...
Yeah, as part of it, they are proposing doing shared parking between the two properties. I believe it's the 17 spaces along, are those the ones that would be included as part of the cross, or cross-parking agreement?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have comments?
Yeah, I have some questions for the developer. So in the consideration of snow storage, this is a tough site, it's a tough location to put snow storage to the perimeter, because it tends to block the field of vision when the snowbanks build up and creates a little problem, a bigger problem with people getting in and out in the wintertime. I guess I'm wondering whether or not you could enter into another agreement with the owner of the property you're purchasing from, to provide some snow storage on their parcel that won't interfere with line of sight for traffic. And the other thing is, with respect to the variance for the parking, perhaps you could provide the town with some historical data about other similar-sized facilities and similar markets, and what you have for parking there, and, you know, what your peak parking rate is during non-COVID times, that might help to support your position, that you don't need that much onsite parking.
Yeah, both, both things are, for sure, we can talk to EC Barton about snow storage, that makes a lot of sense. We have some, there's some interior islands and some areas within our site that we could utilize, but...
Saw that, yep.
In a case of, you know, a bad winter, that certainly would help, and we also could payload off if we had to, off-site, and I know it's, you know, it's expensive, but we've done that before, where we've had issues. And certainly, we can provide you with a typical, we have a range of between 19 parks, 18 parks at the minimum in one of our restaurants, to maybe as high as upper 30s in another. I will say that today, if it's the new normal, we're not getting much use of the dining room at all. Our number right now is about 95% to 98% drive-through.
You never, you never know what's going to happen...
That's true.
...in the future, but, you know, certainly, some kind of a parking study that includes some historical data would, would go a long way to support your position.
Yeah, thank you, we'll do that.
Jim, I would add, because one of the comments was about the parking and the amount of parking and the potential turnover for that Home Outlet. You would probably know the issues with that building better than I, but we were talking about the fact that that building is not an easily repurposed building, that a portion of that building really isn't even constructed with any kind of installation or anything, so, that it, I think, Mike has, you know, been through there. So in terms of, it's not as if there's going to be some other retail user that'll move in there and suddenly have a huge parking problem.
No, but as long as he's got a common parking agreement, then it doesn't matter who goes in.
Right.
So the town has at least some reasonable assurance that, you know, you've got some accommodation for overflow.
I wonder if you could find out, in the Taco Bell world nationally, if the 95% drive-through is true everywhere, across the country, even in, you know, what I'm going to say, open states, that don't have the restrictions that New York has? And, you know, have they gotten back to indoor dining more than we have?
Yeah, I certainly could, could look into that. We have restaurants in six states, and we have 42 restaurants in Tennessee.
Okay.
Majority of the Memphis market, we have, and we're seeing the same, across our 100 restaurants, we're seeing that very same trend, that most restaurants are... are well into the 90% drive-through to dine in.
Drive-through.
Yeah. And even there, there's new prototypes of drive-through only now. They're building restaurants now without any dining room, or with just a pickup area, or a six-seat dining room. That, that, people putting a lot of money and faith into that, that this is the new normal. I'm hopeful that maybe that'll come back at some point, but, but right now, that's what's happening across our 100 restaurants. So, but I certainly can look into, see if Taco Bell has data that I could share.
Okay. That's interesting. Very interesting, to me. I mean, the world is changing. Bob, do you have some questions?
Yeah, just a, just a detail. Doug, could you show the detail for that realignment on the egress on Creek Street with Sovereign Drive? On the, or Catherine?
Yeah. Do you want the aerial image, or you want their plan here?
The plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the opposite drive's not actually shown on there, correct? But it's opposite?
Our survey limits kind of ended right at the sidewalk. On the right side of the screen there, you can see where there's a break in the sidewalk.
Okay, I see it.
Yep, so that's where the drive is, it's just.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at this time? All right, I'd like to open it up to the audience. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this sketch plan. And if you are out in cyber world and watching and care to call, it's 585-340-8771. You can also submit electronically at penfield.org. Don't have any callers. It doesn't seem like there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak at the moment. And I don't have any electronic submissions that I can see at the moment on my handy-dandy computer screen. So, thank you for your presentation. I think that, you know, based on the initial comments, you're certainly moving in the right direction on this. And the way our process with the sketch plan works is, we will discuss it, get together with staff, and we'll be sending out a letter with our thoughts and recommendations on it. Probably in the next, I'm going to give us probably three weeks, probably discuss it more at the next work session in two weeks. And then, all right?
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, just quickly, before we get back into our table items on this, has the PRC had an opportunity to see the revised submissions and comment?
Yes, we're currently reviewing it at PRC. We're open to having memo outs probably by the end of next week, with more comments on, on the revised layout.
Okay. Motion to table. I don't know if we have to move to table. I think it's just, we don't have to move to table, do we? Sketch plan.
Yes. I mean, you can, if you wanted to, you could table pending the issuance of a sketch letter at, or production of a sketch letter.
Make the motion to table at tidings.
I'll second.
Okay, we can vote.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Guys want to come back up, and we can continue our discussion? What I'd like to do is try to finish up by 7:45, so we can give Ralph's group some time to have some discussions, too, okay?
Okay.
Works for me.
As a, as a loose, tight.
As a loose timeframe?
Deadline.
Please don't cut, don't cut me off right at 7:45.
If you get it. You like that, loose, tight deadline?
Yeah. Appreciate the loose.
If I may, AJ, I think I can add some, some tie-in to this. The, the discussion about the massing plan and the architecture seems to be focused more on the mixed-use district rather than the neighborhood. So if you read the language in the mixed-use development manual, you know, the intention was that the neighborhood, the character of the community. So, other applications that come before us sometimes bring us images of historical structures in the town of Penfield. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out, that we're not necessarily just looking at things that happen to be in that part of the 250 corridor. You know, maybe they're across the way to the east or to the north, but it's, you know, it's a community-wide thing. The other thing is, I can't remember whether it was Terry or AJ said when we got started, you know, have you, have you discussed this with Chris Lopez? I think it's a really good idea to do that, because, you know, we, we rely on Chris, you know, he, he knows the, the mixed-use development manual very well. And we rely on him to take kind of a 10,000-foot view, which is something that we can't do in this context. And I think it would be really helpful, both from a massing plan perspective, and, you know, what's happening with this, you know, what you're calling pedestrian spine, you know, other projects have called it the Main Street corridor, but it was really intended to be something that brings your individual community together within the mixed-use development district. And, you know, what we were trying to get at the last time that we met when you were here was some ways that perhaps you could do that with some architectural elements, and some hardscaping elements, and, you know, some plantings and some other things that would make that feel more like a, you know, a village congregation area. So I, I just wanted to point those things out. We, of course, don't want to tell you how to, how to lay out your customer's project, or.
Sure, sure.
You know, how to design the buildings. But, you know, just to give you some context of the bigger picture, and I think it would be very helpful for you to discuss this openly with Chris, and certainly, if you wanted, members of the board to, to be present at that. We have done that before in other large projects, where it made sense to kind of provide a focal point to two or three different parties, and, and, you know, get things advanced. So.
I think in the last meeting, the big meeting, somebody requested that we show a walkthrough or rendering of the pedestrian spine, that would help you understand what it will look like. And I know that BME is working on it. They just didn't want to bring it in before they have your comments in this meeting.
Right.
But I'm sure when you see that, you will get a better understanding of, of the area and neighborhood feel of the area. Because between the air, the space, we call it pedestrian spine, between the second building and the first building, will be developed like, like a promenade, or like a park, with different points of interest for, for people to stop, to sit down, to gather, together, and, you know, to talk to each other. So maybe what we need is that rendering and, or animation of that area.
So that's a great idea. I mean, the picture tells a thousand words. The, the graphic illustrations are, are really helpful to everybody, and to the community input as well. But if, if the direction that you're taking with this dynamic illustration is not in line with what our consultant thinks, in terms of, did you hit the mark with all of the, the factors for mixed-use development? You know, I hate to see us spend that kind of time and energy doing something that's maybe going a little, a little, in the wrong direction.
That's exactly why we held off.
So again, we don't, we don't want to tell you how to do it. We just, you know, would, I think it would be helpful for you to just, you know, run this by our consultants, and, and make sure that the vision that you have is consistent with, you know, what, what they think is appropriate for this location, and then bounce that off the board, and we can go from there.
And that's, and, and obviously, coming out of the last PRC meeting and previous discussions, yeah, we, I think we all agree that providing a rendering 3D view of that, that entire pedestrian spine, especially along the, I think the focus is mainly along that commercial portion of the east wing of Building 2, would hopefully try to show a little bit better picture of how that, as Mira said, the promenade, or that kind of gathering space along the front, commercial frontage of Building 2, would work to allow people to use both the commercial space, and the walkway, and seating areas, and dog park, and sport court, that we're calling it. But we did hold off, we wanted to hold off, and we discussed this at the PRC, was just to make sure that, like you said, we were going along the right track, and hitting the marks that, and if, that there isn't any other concerns about, from the board regarding that area.
So there's kind of a dichotomy that you pointed out, that, that I'd like to comment on.
Sure.
That the PRC serves a, a very valuable purpose.
Sure.
But it, but the board is not present, with, with the general exception of AJ, who tries to attend. So.
When I can, but I also have a job that I have to make money at.
No, I understand that.
I don't want to attend the PRC.
But, you know, we, I just, we hear this all the time, well, we met with the PRC, and, and, you know, again, it's, that's the appropriate place to get feedback from the staff that's looking at other things, but they're not necessarily looking at or charged with the same responsibilities that the board is.
Understood, understood. But my point is, that's why we're here tonight, is to look at the board, to provide some of that.
Sure.
Input. We'd like to, it was something that we were working on, but we held off, so that way, we could get the input from the board tonight, and make sure that we're marching along on the right track.
Sure.
To be able to then provide that to the board.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I, I would encourage you to potentially take a look at the, the manual again, and how it talks about a mix of uses in structures with vertical mixed use. You have that to a degree in Building 2, with the commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. But when I'm looking at Building 1, you know, it's 113,000 square foot building and 1,800 square feet of commercial space. That's, that's an apartment building. I mean, I don't know how you can argue that it's not just, well, it's an apartment building. And it's a sizable apartment building, that, I guess I'll go back to my, and I feel like I'm beating a dead horse in some cases, that it's, it, it's an apartment complex pretending, or masquerading as a mixed-use development. And it's, and I need to be, you, you have to show us how, or, and do things so that we feel good about this, next year, 10 years, 50 years from now.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and again, in Zone A, our floor is the 20% commercial space, not a goal to reach. It's.
Sure.
It's, it's our floor.
And I understand, yeah, and I understand your concern that there's not enough commercial space. We're, we're coming from a, at a little bit of a different angle. Looking at the MUD manual, that 20% really is a non-residential, defined as a non-residential use, which is why we include that pedestrian spine, we include the dog park, the, those outdoor uses, those non-residential public and resident uses, the hardscape, or possible future hardscape area, along the commercial frontage. And that's why we take that into account, into that non-residential amount, along with the commercial uses. So we're, we're, we're trying to hit that mark with a few different ways, not just providing a purely commercial use. And I think we've talked about it for, we've gone around and around and around, talking about why, the reasons why we, we haven't provided just more blanket commercial space. And the, the MUD manual really does outline the, that it's not really, doesn't have to be designated as a commercial space. It really can be designated as active and passive recreation spaces, and those outdoor amenities. Doesn't have to necessarily be a commercial space, which is how we are proposing to meet that 20%.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I mean, I would just, I would point out, on page 73 of the manual, is where they talk about the 20%.
Mm-hmm.
And in the, in the category for Zone A, I mean, they say 20% minimum of non-residential, true. But they say mix of commercial, retail, office, and residential. And so, I mean, I think that's what they're trying to say, is that, yes, some of those other amenities are good, but they're looking for the commercial, retail, and office mixed with the residential.
Unless the dogs are professional dogs, then, then they're not residential dogs, and then you might get some more space out of that.
Yeah. I mean, it's not MR.
What defines a professional dog?
It's mixed use.
Not sure.
Somehow, they have to earn money doing something, right?
I guess.
Thank you, Pete.
I don't think we ever considered that the same exterior circulation space.
Mm-hmm.
That has a congregation element that's used by the same people that actually occupy built-out space would contribute to the 20%.
Yeah, I, I think you gave it a good shot. I do. I admire the, the argument there. I do think it's a stretch.
I'm going to say, I understand, I understand your opinion and your concern.
And, you know, the other, Peter mentioned the table on page 73, which is this table.
Sure.
And there's a number of things that we need to have, and make sure that they're in the development. And, you know, a site larger than two acres, we need four or more uses. So we need to find, you know, what are the four different or more uses here? The 20% minimum, we need to do better than what is being shown. I think that I could speak for the board with that. And the, I'm hoping the, the rendering, maybe it will change my mind, but the, the feeling of it being a big apartment complex, that's not, it's, it's just not what we're seeking, and not what the town board wants, not what people in the community want for this district.
Mm-hmm.
So we, I think we still have, I think we still have some work to do. So we, I think we still have, I think we still have some work to do on that.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So you keep saying big apartment complex. Even if we have a commercial hypothetically on the first floor, you would still have apartment complex above it. It would still be apartment complex, right?
Yes, but we, we have seen and we have some applications in that are, you know, the idea of the vertical mixed use, it might have a commercial on the, on the ground floor and apartments up on floors two and three.
Right.
And.
Your office on the second floor.
Your office on the second floor. And those are the kinds of things that, those are the kinds of things that we're seeking for them.
The kinds of things that make it more like a mixed use.
Right.
Development.
But I think AJ, I think what Mira's trying to say is that the code allows for it to be 80% residential. That, I think that's Mira's point, is whether you have 20% commercial with, mixed with office, whatever that mix of uses could be, you're still gonna, you can still have that bulk residential use for the majority of the project.
Yes, but, I mean, the way I'm looking at this right now, we're at 92% residential with 4,800 square feet of that is unknown.
Could be anything.
And which would then bring it down to, you know, probably 5%. You know, if that, the building that's on the east side of the pedestrian spine at the north end, you know, doesn't happen or, you know, we're really, really getting down to, there's not a lot of commercial space here. So I think the, the point's been made.
Sure, sure.
We can move on to other.
I don't want to speak for the board, but I think one of the things they're also hoping for was to have greater integration between the commercial and residential uses, which is why there's the focus on doing a more traditional mixed use with a commercial along the first floor, as it makes it feel less like these are just separate uses that happen to be near each other and more of an integrated community of commercial users with residential users as part of one community and not just neighbors.
I heard AJ use the word synergy.
Synergy, yeah.
And I think, I think, you know, to talk about, if I may.
No, please.
But I think what I'm hearing is, you know, you want the, think, how do you conceive of the non-residential uses and how are they going to be integrated with the residential uses if it's really just residential and then commercial kind of on the if come, it seems more still to me like an apartment, but without having it kind of well thought about what the non-residential retail and office might be. And out parcels, I think is the same problem.
Yeah, 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 we have to, we got to move on.
Sure.
Any comments?
No, thank you.
You guys?
Nope.
Do a tabling resolution, continue table.
Yeah.
Further discussion and.
So any quick other things that we need to cover on this specifically before we table?
Regarding the tabling resolution, you want to make a recommendation on the tabling resolution regarding?
I think to Jim and Terry's point, have a conversation with.
Chris Lopez.
Chris Lopez.
Yeah.
Work on the commercial, the neighborhood-y feel and the other comments. So with that, I guess I'll move to table. Somebody second?
Titing's second.
All right, we got, I moved and we get Titing's second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Titing's.
Titing's, aye.
Well, we do appreciate the input.
Yeah, thanks.
And, well, we'll work on it.
All right, sounds great. Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Ralph and crew, wanna, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yep, so our last tabled application, 1657 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, is the Arbers at Penfield mixed use.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ralph DiTucci, Atlantic 250 LLC. Good to be with you again this evening. I'd like to introduce the team with us this evening, Garth Wintercorn from Costage, Jim Fahey, Dave Cruzy, and bringing up the rear, Bill Price from SWVR. We're happy to offer a presentation this evening if the board would like, if not, we'd be happy to entertain questions, whichever is your preference.
So my goal is we're out of here by 8:30. Is that doable?
I believe so.
Okay, so if you want to give a brief presentation on changes in where we are?
Sure, in a loose timeframe.
Yeah.
I think.
Using my words to come back at me.
I think the best way to accomplish that is to let Garth do an overarching briefing in terms of where we are with agency comments, PRC comments and so on. And then if there are any questions for Jim, Bill or David, they can respond.
Thanks, Ralph. Garth Wintercorn from Costage Engineering. So the last step in the review process was attendance at a PRC meeting last week, AJ was present at that one. Prior to that, we had resubmitted response letters to town comments, county planning and DRC comments, along with updated site plans, building elevations, as well as a letter that Ralph authored, dated December 9th, was part of that resubmital, that really went into answering a lot of comments that we had gotten regarding a lot of specifics about Phase One application, which is what we're here for, in terms of dwelling units, densities, open space, what have you, percentage of non-residential in Zone A for Phase One, as well as a lot of digging a little deeper into the weeds comments that we even got from members of the public during the public hearing. Some of the larger changes, which we kind of discussed last week, that this board hasn't had the chance to talk about yet, was inclusion. I'll start with a lane reduction for the dedicated roadway off of Atlantic Avenue. We reduced the number of lanes, so we were able to add an exclusive bike lane from Atlantic that travels north on the dedicated road from Atlantic all the way to the vertical mixed use units, as well as kind of ending at the community center area.
So will that be, is that in the south? Where is that bike lane in there? Is that like right that strip?
Yeah.
Kind of.
If north is to your right, it's at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, on the east side, rather?
The right edge of the pavement as you're traveling north.
Okay.
Would be an exclusive bike lane. Another change we made based on some comments, which would actually pertains more to a future phase than this Phase One application per se, on the northern end of the site, we relocated duplex, a townhouse unit, in order to create kind of a mushroom-shaped pocket park area, as you can see. We call it the mushroom shape. There'll be a lineal strip in the backyards, a bunch of the units, and then the top portion that you can see there. That was a request of the board as well.
What do you foresee in that half-circle pocket park?
I think it would be, like, the Phase One amenities are, if I could go through them maybe really quick. A lot of effort was put into updating the community center, as well as the lower pool area in the back with a lot of amenities. So the amenities in the rear of the community center include obviously the pool, hot tubs, seating areas, fire pit, outdoor kitchens, bocce ball court. And we adjusted the grading in the large open space between the community center and the stormwater management facilities. We got rid of kind of a drainage swale that was originally going through there and made it a lot flatter and more usable for the tenants, basically giving them a large open grass area to kind of decide on how they would want to use it per se. And I think as we discussed briefly at the PRC meeting, the open area, including the community center and the stormwater management ponds, total eight acres, so it is a substantial area that can be shared by all the tenants of the community. In terms of specifics with the northern pocket park, we haven't gotten into that yet.
I can address that. I think our intent would be to, as the project develops over the multiple phases that we got it designed for, to let that process be refined and react with specific site amenities to how the tenants of our development, our residents are looking for outdoor activities. And in particular for the, what Garth called the mushroom-shaped pocket park, I would think that that area would have a concentration, because it's geared to a shape that's more appropriate, so that we'd have from the last roadway connection that goes east-west just to the south of that, Doug? I'm sorry. Yeah. Where the road on the left that goes east-west terminates, we then have that linear stretch, which would be a walkway approach to the pocket park, where basically folks' front porches would overlook that. And then we'd have a concentration of site amenities within that semicircular area at the end. They would include, for example, playground equipment, park benches, that type of thing.
Okay.
We may find, again, based on resident reaction, we may find the desire for community gardens.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd be open to that if that was something that our residents would like to see.
That's all Phase Two though, right? This area?
No, that's.
Is that Phase One? That's Phase One?
That's Phase Three, isn't it, Garth, or is it Four? I've lost track, I'm sorry.
Sure. Just one other large thing that happened between the last public hearing with you guys to where we are now, is SRF updated the traffic impact study and submitted it to the New York State DOT for review. We have received comments from them and basically the mitigation factors, is how the DOT sees it, we're very much in agreement, not only for what we're proposing here for Phase One, but for future phases. And after Phase One, we're kind of taking the approach that we almost do, I'll call it, for lack of another description, like an as-built or an update to the TIS as each phase is constructed, to verify what we use for, like, for instance, a Phase One projected traffic to see if that's accurate. And if not, then for future phases, two, three, four, five, we can make adjustments based on updated counts for each phase of the development.
Right.
And then get concurrence with the DOT that they're in agreement with that, as well as you guys.
Okay. Okay.
Anything, you want to, guys want to get into the gym, their updated architecture or anything that was submitted?
Me speak? I don't want to speak. I'll just quickly go through some of the landscape improvements. I think the last time we were here, we talked about, again, some things that were related to circulation.
Can I pause you for a second? Hey, downstairs, can everybody hear Bill?
Sorry.
You moved the mic, so go ahead.
Bill Price, SWVR.
I just want to make sure that.
Thank you.
I can hear you, but our millions of viewers have to hear you.
So out closer to Atlantic, you know, we did some minor alignment changes in the, in the walkway, the pathways. Those had originally been directing pedestrian traffic to cross around mid-block on that, on that entrance drive. So we just, we changed the orientation of that slightly so that people would be, you know, either coming from the commercial area or going to the commercial area. Took a look at a couple other pocket park areas that will be developed as part of Phase One, and then spent a lot of time on the new clubhouse area, the new architecture and the layout of that, and looked at both the front side and the backside where we have, you know, one level on the front side, two levels exposed on the, on the back, and how we could make that probably 12 to 14-foot drop quite interesting and, you know, really make it engaging for folks who are using it on both levels. And that was all, again, part of, you know, kind of cleaning up and really refining the design of the clubhouse, as well as the stormwater management area and the large open space in the back to make sure that that grading worked out. I think you had mentioned that, you know, some of the grading had looked a little funky and there were some areas in there that needed some clarification. And we've worked on that, as well as how the trails across the back and the ponds integrate with the, with the open space. Beyond that, we did receive the comments from Bruce Saretsky about some of the plant materials that he recommended be substituted for things that we had put on the planting lists, and all of them are fine alternatives that we agree with and will make those changes.
Okay.
I think that's about it as far as the landscape portions go.
Is it smart to talk, is there any, would like to go through any of the traffic information that's already on the site?
Sure. Sure.
David Cruzy, SRF Associates. As was stated, we performed the traffic study for this. This is essentially an update to an earlier product, traffic study for this project several years ago. We expanded the study area on this project. We took a look at some new counts during COVID. We adjusted them based on our knowledge of the impacts of COVID and certainly considered any impacts from that. We also looked at three other projects that are proposed at the same time and the traffic generated from those, Penfield Heights, Pathstone and Penfield Square, the remainder part of that. Again, this traffic study, of course, focuses on Phase One as we're hearing tonight, but we're looking at it cumulatively and over a course of a multi-year period. And so this traffic study breaks it out into four separate traffic phases. And as Garth said, in Phase One, no significant impacts are generated, which require. And as Garth said, in Phase 1, no significant impacts are, are generated, which require improvements to mitigate. The project is proposing to develop a northbound left-turn lane at the southerly 250 driveway. That will, that will go in right away, as, as shown on the plan here. And then, in subsequent phases, snapshots, as Garth said, of, of traffic, of existing traffic, will evaluate operating conditions at that time to better determine future traffic generation, distribution, and also to confirm the mitigations that are tentatively proposed for those future phases, to ensure that they're justified. And that will, of course, go through New York State DOT for their concurrence and, and subsequent approval. So again, this has been submitted to both Monroe County DOT and New York State DOT. We looked as, as far west as 5 Mile Line Road, so therefore we included Monroe County DOT, and they had no comments as, as part of the traffic study. But if there are any detailed questions about this, I'd be cer, be happy to answer.
Wasn't there, there was discussion about a center lane?
Well, so, we would like to have a discussion with the New York State DOT to kind of have an overall plan for the whole corridor with all these projects going on. And, you know, most likely, one of those things that we would hope would come out of it would provide a center turn lane, basically all up and down 250, for probably Penfield Center to at least the YMCA portion of the...
Right.
So, but we, we need to engage the DOT to have that, start that discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will, I'll just jump in here real quick to, as part of the New York State DOT review letter, impacts and existing conditions were evaluated at Whalen, for which there are existing conditions which may warrant monitoring. DOT says as such in their, in their letter, that, that intersection is likely to be impacted by various developments. And therefore, the mitigations that were identified in, in the traffic study for the Arbers Project, which really begin monitoring under Phase 2, that a, some sort of cost-sharing agreement will be developed, that brings into the table New York State DOT, Monroe County DOT, as well as any future property developers along, along the corridor. And it certainly has been discussed establishing that vision, now that development has really started to kickstart along the corridor. We've got some history going back to 2017 about this. And so SRF has reached out to Mark Valentine to start to bring together those discussions, to figure out how, how can we bring New York State DOT back to the table? And how do we, how do we go to answer New York State DOT's question with regards to a cost-sharing formula?
Okay. You had something?
I was simply going to say that it is a general comment that the New York State DOT responses to the TIS right now have been pretty much across the board in agreement.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on, before we move on, on traffic and what David was talking about? Okay.
And Jim has passed out to you this evening the refined architectural renderings for the community building, and he'd be happy to take it from there.
Thanks, Ralph. Jim Fahey from Fahey Design Associates. The board's well aware, there's, in Phase 1, there's three real different or distinct groupings of, of buildings being proposed. There's 79 dwelling units, low-rise residential, that I spoke to the board about at our last meeting in considerable detail. They're, they will be built in single-family, attached, two-family dwellings, and three-and-four-unit townhouse-style, low-rise buildings. Yes.
Can you indulge us for just a second? Do you have quick access to all those renderings? Just for Kelly's benefit, kind of do a real quick run-through on those?
Sure.
Again, because I think that's worthwhile.
So, and now that's, that's an apartment building that is not part of Phase 1, but that's nestled into the community on that, kind of the southeast, southwest corner of the, of the project. The low-rise residential will be ranch and two-story, single-family units that will be, the ranch units will be in the 1,200 to 1,300 square foot range. The two-stories will, and the ranches will be two-bedroom, two-bath. The two-story, single-family units will be three-bedroom, two-bath units that will be between 1,400 and 1,500 square feet. So that's what we're looking at on the screen right here. That's a typical two-story type of a unit and a, and a ranch-style unit. We'll also be grouping similar floor plans to the single families in groupings of two-family dwellings, which, here's a ranch, two-family, that is on the screen in front of us. And there will also be two, two families, excuse me, we'll, we'll go from the ranch, two families, and then we'll go to three, three-unit and four-unit townhouses, that typically will be two-story units in the center, flanking to ranch-style units at, at the ends. So, and what we're seeing here is kind of a, all four elevations from roadside to back or alley type of entrances for these units. All of, all of the dwellings will promote...
Are the garages on the roadside or the alley side?
They are on the alley side. So that, that's exactly where I was going right, right now with that, it is. The whole idea is this new urbanism, traditional neighborhood development, village-style architecture promotes living to the main boulevards and the streets. It's walkability, it's people interacting with their neighbors. So every single one of these low-rise residential units will have significant front porches to them, all facing the roads. All of the driveways and garages will be away from the main boulevard trafficking through the, the community. So it really embraces and enhances that aspect of community interaction and people actually talking with their neighbors, rather than living to the back of their house, the way most of our homes are designed nowadays, and, and kind of cocooning in, in place. So that's the idea with the low-rise residential. The vertical mixed-use and the community center, when we met, last met, they were really in a very sketch form. We hadn't developed those to where they are now. We, we have now laid out hard floor plans, where we know exact square footages of the commercial retail office space on the ground floors, and we have very set apartment designs above those units. The vertical mixed-use, there will be eight vertical mixed, mixed-use buildings, and they'll be built in pods of two. The pods...
In Phase 1?
In Phase 1, excuse me, in Phase 1. The pods, the, the individual buildings of these two-building pods will be connected by a covered walkway. So if you are in Building 1, and you want to walk over to get to a retail shop, or an office, or something in Building 2, you have a covered walkway getting you there. So that will be commercial space to commercial space. Also, as part of every one of these buildings, there will be outdoor gathering. So if it's a coffee shop, or a small restaurant, or whatever it may be, even employees of a small office can have outdoor space to congregate, have lunch, whether it's a cup of coffee or whatever it is, there'll be ample space for that outside. And those areas will be grouped between the buildings, both boulevard side and backside. And as, as we're seeing here, this is a typical, this is Building 1 and 2, where Building 1 on our left-hand side is a typical, what I'm going to call a two-pod building. It's 28 feet wide by 56 foot deep, and there are two apartments above it. The one that's facing us to the front is a two-story apartment, and there's one on the back of this that would be a, a one-story flat. The apartments that sit above here, again, they're either, it's either a one-story or a two-story apartment. They are truly apartments.
So the roofline is...
The roofline changes. You can see, as we jump down to Building 2, there's a two-story unit where ground floor is commercial retail office, second floor is a one-bedroom, one-bath, 760-square-foot apartment unit. And then, complementing that, to the side, is another portion of Building 2 that has a two-story apartment above it, which will be a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment, that will be in the low-to-mid 1,300-square-foot range. All of the units, whether they be apartments in the mixed-use, or ranch, or two-story townhouses, or two-families, they're all geared to what we would, what I would term a market rate size. We're not trying to put units in there that are 2,000 square feet. I think it's very important to, for this community to keep these properly sized for, for the, the tenants that will be coming in. These are beautiful units, but they are right-sized for, for a market rate type of rental units.
What type of peop, like, what, what's the demographic that you're, you're going for in the...
I, I think it's a mix. I mean, I think you're going to see young professionals, and you're going to see empty-nesters and active seniors in here. This community just provides everything that you would want to have in a planned-unit community, to draw from every aspect. You know, you've, you've got this part of the, the, the community that will, I think will draw either, either-or. But I think what the key is, is not only the, the diversity here, but it's the community center, the building that we've designed, and the amenities that are included in this community are second to none in Rochester, and, I know for sure in Rochester, and probably far outside of Rochester. I haven't had the opportunity, and I've worked on hundreds of multifamily communities across the state and out of state. I, I've never seen, worked, had the pleasure to work on a project this well-developed for amenities for those living in, in the community. So it's, it's a tremendous setup. What we're seeing here now on the screen is, is kind of a collage of working around the community center. It's 14,000 square feet, it's on two floors. It has, on the ground floor, there are relaxed and very formal type of gathering space. There's a large pub that will have a bar, pool table, large-screen TV, card tables, that type of amenities. And across the hallway from that is a large banquet area with a commercial-grade kitchen adjoining it. That could be weddings for people that live in the community, or just large gatherings of, of those that are living in the community. There'll be, on the ground floor, there'll be a, an administration area for, for those running the project and leasing space. There'll be quiet conversation and reading areas. There's a library on that main floor. As you go to the lower level, there's locker rooms that are really, truly something you would see in a, in a country club. They have ample space for, for, for storage, for showering, there'll be saunas in there. We have a large fitness room adjoining that. There's a two-lane bowling alley that we're proposing, and there's also a golf simulator room. So this thing has it all. I mean, it really has everything in the building itself. And then the amenities that are included, that Bill and Garth and, and Ralph have worked together on to bring to the table are phenomenal, with all the, with bocce courts and, and outdoor fire pits and grilling stations and an open field for play. It's, it's just, this is going to be a, a, a great community for Penfield, and one I'm excited to be part of.
Are those amenities included in rent, or are they extra? So is there, for example, like, a locker for everybody that lives there? Or is that...
No.
No, there's not, there's not a locker for everyone, but...
Thing that you sign up for, or how does that work? Or is it you temporarily...
First come, first served for our residents.
Okay.
Yeah. There'll be a finite number of them. Obviously, we couldn't accommodate for the entire, for all phases.
Okay.
So these are really for people that are swimming or using the hot tub?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much of the overall development is, I guess, open to the public?
I want to be as clear and specific as I can, but giving you a general answer at the same time. The entire project is designed to be developed for our residents only. But in the, in the reality of having private roads, we do have a dedicated road section, as you're aware, what will happen is, we'll have visitors coming in from the general public to see our residents. So we're going to have the general public trafficking on our roads. They may walk to our site, they may bicycle to our site to visit with our residents. So we're not excluding the general public from the project, but we're also not providing them any of these specific benefits that our residents will be paying for.
So what about the commercial spaces? Shops, gift, well, commercial spaces?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, Jim was going through some of the commercial spaces, where you'd have a shop, a retail shop, or something on the first floor, and apartments on the second floor. Those aren't designed just for the residents, are they?
No.
So that portion...
That's for whomever wants to lease that space.
Right. And then whatever customers they, they get.
Yeah.
If it's an office space, the person leasing the office space doesn't necessarily have to be a...
Resident.
A resident.
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So those portions would be more, let's call it, public?
Mm-hmm. And they're, and they're fed by the public dedicated road system, as you probably recall.
I mean, without a doubt, there will be public gatherings at the vertical mixed-use area of the community, and I think that's part, what we want to see. But does that public, do they have the right to go over and use a, use the swimming pool, or go in and work out in the fitness club? No, they don't. They don't have that right.
Okay.
So it, although they will be on the property, they can use that area and have lunch, coffee, whatever they're doing as part of that vertical mixed-use, but the rest of it is not, not for their use.
Okay. Question on architecture?
No. I think the, I'm very impressed with the community center. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jim. Thank you, Jim.
What other things do you want to cover?
I think primarily, we wanted to entertain any questions that the board might have, and, go ahead, Garth.
I don't know if you guys wanted to have a brief discussion on, there was some comments in the PRC comment letter, as well as discussions last week, about possibly introducing additional sidewalks along 250 and Atlantic.
I was, I was going to bring that up next, once I found out you guys were done.
I'll try to do it for you. Speak for you. And our, our strong feeling on that is, you know, we're, we're currently showing asphalt-surfaced multi-use trails along the full frontages of Atlantic and along 250, paralleling the road. And not only would they be wider than a sidewalk that would be more in the public, in the DOT right-of-way, and closer to the road, so there's, there's, again, they're, they're wider, they have a larger capacity, or... So, there's, again, they're wider, they have a larger capacity or, you know, feeling of room. And our feeling as well is that they're much, much safer, especially considering the speed limits along 250, not to mention that there's drainage ditches along both sides of the roads.
Our intent with that, just to elaborate for a moment, our intent with that is that the location of that multi-use trail on the frontage on both 250 and Atlantic, you can see it pretty well on the Atlantic side right now on the screen, is very closely related to the front porches of the townhouse units. Our intent is that we want people to be able to walk those trails, ride their bikes on those trails, et cetera, where they can interact with their neighbors. So, we don't have people, you know, going into the unit and closing the door and staying there. We want community interaction among our residents. And our intent was that those multi-use trails would be the functional front sidewalks along those two primary arterial roads.
So, I like that, that where I'm, I don't know if I'm struggling with this or not, but, you know, as a town, we want ultimately sidewalks up and down 250 and on Atlantic Ave so that people can get, let's say, here--
Sure.
--to this complex. And with this plan, is it that, all right, let's say there's a sidewalk that's going from here out to east of 250, and that portion, they would be walking on those sidewalks instead of a separate sidewalk in addition to that--
Correct.
--and roughly parallel.
Correct.
And the same thing would hold true on the north-south--
Yes.
--section on 250.
Yes.
And it would be integrated in a way that it wasn't awkward, so that if you're a non-resident, that you get to this point and it's, it just kind of naturally flows a little bit to the north and is--
And the points of termination at our respective property lines would be coordinated with continuing sidewalks on adjacent properties.
But your trails are not located within the public right-of-way, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you're willing to allow public access to have this replace what the town intended with their sidewalk ordinance as, the contiguous sidewalk? And then, you'd be responsible for maintaining that--
Yes.
--forever?
Yeah. And Jim, we're, you know, on other properties, we have the same situation. We can't police the public entering our property. It's an impractical undertaking. So, our insurance addresses that on all of our properties anyway. So, whether the public is invited or comes on uninvited, our insurance coverage anticipates that as a reality.
So, I guess in the technical sense, we'd need to determine whether or not they still need to seek a variance from the sidewalk ordinance because--
Oh.
--that's intending that the sidewalks be located within the right-of-way or--
Right.
--or that we bank money to be able to construct those sidewalks in the future.
Well, not unlike the trail, the multi-use trail throughout the project or the private roads throughout the project, our obligation would be maintenance, operation, maintenance and repairs, no removal, salting, et cetera.
You make a very good point. I just, I'm just wondering how loud--
Well, if we ended up taking, or not taking, but if we ended up utilizing it or being utilized as the primary sidewalks for the public's access, I think we'd want at minimum place it under an access easement that gives a legal right for non-development residents, you know, whether they're folks up on Atlantic or it's, you know, somebody at Clark Animal Hospital wanting to go, want to walk on their break, that they had a right to access the multi-use trail.
Overall, it's a, I think it's a nicely-done, I mean, this captures the essence of, at least, I think, what we're looking for. The whole, I need to get my head around the whole, you know, 80% of this is for the residents and not for the general public, but that's, I just have to get my head around that. I mean, I understand why. I get it. It's, it just, for me, you, you have this knee-jerk reaction of what, you know, this should be a community available to everybody in the community, and in effect, it is, but in another aspect, it isn't because you have your own community and all these amenities are amenities for the people that decide to join the community.
Well, I think our interpretation of the MUD manual and its intent from day one was that the town's looking for walkable communities--
Yeah.
--and not taking vehicular traffic off the road. So, we're inviting the general public in pedestrian and multimodal form of bicycles, et cetera, but not saying we want to put a commercial-use drive-through, bank, restaurant or whatever that invites off-the-road traffic just in as a general commercial approach. We want something that can--
Destination.
--be supported by the project itself, whether it's a resident renting office space or retail space, et cetera, or someone from the community renting that space is really no different than someone from the community moving from their home, downsizing or whatever to rent a townhouse or an apartment in the development.
Right. Okay. Comments, questions?
Nice job.
Yep. I had one question in the PRC document. I think it was dated 1/7. Are there any, I guess, any issues from your point of view on any of those elements in the PRC comments? I know a number of them have been addressed, but through the 44 pages, I didn't, you know--
The encyclopedia. I'm sorry, what was the specific question again?
If there were any elements in there that you thought were, you know, that you had an issue with or was, you had questions on.
Nothing really jumped out at us as a problem or an issue, no.
Okay, good.
Okay. Doug, any other points you want to bring up or at the moment?
So, one of our comments has been, and I think the board dressed, you'd sort of addressed it there, is the discussion between public and private open space. One of the guidelines for the Route 250 area was that, you know, there are, there is the existing or the proposed multi-use trail, but linking those trails with public gathering areas that are either part of linear parks or public open spaces sort of was a guideline, and it's something that we would like to encourage. And I know there's been a lot of discussion on the development remaining mostly private. So, I would open that up to the board if there's any concerns on the board's side with how much this is going to be a private development and whether there would be opportunities to introduce public open spaces as part of this development, especially because it is so large, encompassing that about 100 acres of the mixed-use district.
A question on that point then would be, is it, was the intent that it would be a question of ownership?
I think it's a question of access.
Okay. So, we're not inviting nor prohibiting public access to the property. The likelihood is, there will, you know, in proximity to the town facilities that are immediately west of the gun club, there's a host, an array of recreational activities in open space that ours pale in comparison to. So, ours, that's one of the reasons we went with the more free-form style for the large open space that we have in proximity to the community building is because we want people to be able to determine by themselves what the appropriate use is because it's going to change from day to day. If some families from the community or our residents want to go out and use frisbees, if they want to have a sandlot football game, et cetera, we want them to be able to do that without being restricted by a footprint that doesn't permit that. And the idea is that if, for example, somebody in the community wants, outside of our residence, wants to use the pavilion or the tennis courts, they simply have to contact us, sign up or whatever if they want to have a family picnic, that type of thing. So, we'd be open to, you know, working with the community in a regulated fashion.
Okay. That open space will be grass and mowed--
Yes.
--maintained?
Yes.
And the multi-use trail, the trail that goes around the perimeter, do we need to look at some sort of access easement on that or just on the portions on Atlantic Ave and 250? I mean, there probably, I mean, there's not going to be a gate or something that stops somebody from doing a perimeter walk.
I think, without taking more of the board's time, I think that's something that we could work out--
Yeah.
--among our attorney and the towns. I want to go back for one moment. I didn't give you an accurate answer just now. It just occurred to me. There was a comment in, I think, the January 7 remarks relative to lighting for the multi-use trail. We had not anticipated lighting that trail. We've got experience with the town of Brighton and the city of Rochester, the Highland Crossing Trail, and I've talked with the Brighton Town Engineer regarding it, and that trail system, which is much more significant than ours, is not an illuminated trail system. We're not sure that from a safety point of view, that we'd like to invite people to use that trail in the hours of darkness.
Okay. So, you're talking about the probably mostly western and northern portions of the trail or also along Atlantic and 250?
In its entirety.
In its entirety. Okay. All right. Any other questions at the moment? Move to continue table? You want to--
I will move that this project be continued tabled.
Tiding second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Any other business?
That's all for you guys tonight.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Kelly, hopefully, you enjoyed this.
I did enjoy it.
Can't wait to come to the next one.
I can.
There's going to be many more after that.
I did enjoy it. Last one's in the moon and absorbed right now.
Yeah, this was one of the shorter meetings, right?
Yeah.
I will.
And officially, we will adjourn. So, thanks, everybody, for coming.